Item nine, which is new business, up to item six and then renumber the rest accordingly.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And now I need a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And approval of minutes from our regular meeting of March 27th.
So moved.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Brown. Any comments, additions, deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no presentations tonight, Mr. Maniscalca.
No presentations.
Alright, then we're gonna move right into public remarks. This is what I will ask. Here is a microphone there that would probably be best if you used so that we can all hear you and so that Kathy has the opportunity to get you clearly on tape. I need your name and address and I'd like remarks kept to three minutes or less. I will not allow any ceding of speakers tonight nor I will ask that you not speak twice. Everybody can have one opportunity and I think that's fair. And go ahead and start. It might be good if you know you want to speak, if you want to get up there and get ready. It's open right now for public remarks.
Good evening. Christopher Goff, Chairman of the Board of Education and with me in the room are several other board members, I believe are all here. At a statement on behalf of the Board of Education, as the Town Council, you had three options with the Board of Finance budget about to be presented. You can accept their recommendations and pass it on to the voters. You can make alterations or reductions or, under Section 5.2 of the Town Charter, the Council may reject same and return said proposed annual budget to the Board of Finance for further consideration. On January 23rd, this council approved its budget policy statement. The Fourth Bulletin under Budget Goals and Future Planning states that general government budget and Board of Education shall make every effort to only limit budget increases to meet contractual obligations. Last Thursday, the Board of Finance ignored your directive and will present you with a budget that does not meet the contractual obligations of the Board of Education. The 1.5% increase about to be presented only meets the mandatory obligations to our special education. This does not include any other contractual obligations such as the teacher contract which the council approved three years ago or the administration contact.
Could we take care of this hum? It sounds like it's gonna blow up the room.
I'll repeat, this does not include any other contractual obligations such as the teacher contract the council approved three years ago or the administration contract that the council sent to arbitration two years ago. Because in this way and disregard your authority, we urge you to reject the Board of Finance's recommended budget and return it to them with a directive to follow the budget policy statement and present the voters with a budget that, at the very least, sufficiently funds our existing contractual obligations without eliminating programs and propositions. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Hearing none? Yes, no? Correct. We're moving out from public remarks. Let's, I wouldn't suggest that you queue up here because I almost closed public remarks and once I do, they will be done.
Nancy Oakley, 71, Hope Creek Drive. United, we to make progress. These are the words of our Board of Finance Chairman. It's a hopeful rallying cry to move East Hampton forward, but I feel we're not moving forward. We're not making real progress when we insufficiently fund critical sidewalk maintenance that we're there, just short-sighted and unsafe. When we take money out of the library's proposed budget, decreasing the services that we offer to the entire population, young and old. When we do allocate funds instead to the middle half the library, which is a private nonprofit entity. When we reduce funds to help build a compliant and safe place, leaving the project now at least a year behind schedule. And how are we making progress when we cut back the proposed education budget so severely that we cannot fund the financial obligations to which we are already committed without its detrimental reduction in program? By slashing the proposed education budget so extremely that it doesn't even resemble what the Board of Education unanimously approved, the Board of Finance has, in effect, taken away the right of the taxpayer to vote on a Board of Education budget. These are all examples of reflection on progress. So how do we move East Hampton forward? We do it by providing immediate tax relief while not compromising services, including actually, excuse me, I lost my spot. We do it by providing immediate tax relief while funding our current needs and planning for the future. I support the proposal that this council rejects the budgets and sends them back to the Board of Finance for restoration of funds. I further propose that this council explores with the Board of Finance, most urgently, a one-time use of small portion of the unassigned fund balance. This will offset the shortfall in state funding and reduce the mill rate increase. This is allowed by the Town Council's home budget policy statement. It would also provide direct relief to all taxpayers while not compromising the services we receive, including education. We can still maintain this fund balance at or even above the Board of Finance and Town Council's stated goal of eight to 10% of operating expenditures while preserving our outstanding credit rating. In October, this council was advised to use $250,000 from this fund to make up for the lack of state funding. Why are we now being told that these funds must be used only for the purchase of hard assets? If it was a good enough idea for this council in October, why should it be resisted now? Please consider this.
Is that because it's already over?
Because I need that.
Because I need applause.
Okay. United and with use of this tax mitigating strategy, we can make progress. Thank you.
Jennifer Palmer, 3 Blaine County. I am here as a parent. I am here because I cannot believe that this town would want to cut the teachers that we have and have class sizes 25 to 27 students and maybe even more. I have a child who does require extra help and the thought of her being in a classroom with that many students is terrifying. It literally scares me to death because she would get lost and she would not get the help that she needed, even though we have some of the best teachers of the entire country, who really, truly do, and they care about everything. I ask you to reject this and please, please do not cut these teachers or any of the programs, quite frankly, because all it's gonna do is hurt this town and its population.
Hi, Shree Sureshino, 63, my first town meeting, so I welcome. The old saying goes, "One step forward, two steps back." The cuts proposed by the Board of Finance this year feels like we are taking ten steps back. My husband and I just moved here. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and one on the way, obviously, in a few weeks. We chose East Hampton because it was a small, community-oriented town with what I thought was a strong education system. While building our home last year with close attention to the budget process, and I will admit, I was disheartened by whatever and focused on cuts, but optimistic by the commitment of parents and residents on funding for our schools adequately. Our home was already built, so there was no turning back. I attended my first Board of Ed meeting and was impressed with the thoughtfulness and responsibility of the budget presented by Superintendent Smith. It was realistic in covering the increasing costs of special education, unfunded state mandates and contractual obligations, and got creative ways to move our schools one step forward. It was a budget, it was not a budget of excess, it was a budget of maintenance. My heart sank when I heard the Board of Finance knock the 3.73% cuts increase down to 1.5%, literally just enough to cover the cost of special education, and it sank even further when I heard the final vote. I do not envy the Board of Finance and I am not naive to the fact that the state of Connecticut is in a tough financial position, making this all worse. However, I feel it is irresponsible and unconscionable that this town even consider the kinds of cuts that have been laid on the table. No one wants more taxes, but can we honestly say that we are willing to save this money on the backs of our children? Are we willing to save this money by eliminating positions of our dedicated teachers? In reality, the decision was made for us when the Board of Finance voted for $670,000 in cuts to education. We should allow residents of this town to make that decision for themselves, put forward the education, proposed education budget, and allow members of this community to vote on how they should spend their harder money. I want to love this town. I want to raise my family here. I want to invest my harder money back into this community, even if that means more taxes. What I do not want is to regret my decision to move here. I have spent the past few months worrying that maybe I made a huge mistake moving my family here. My children do not use the schools yet, but I worry, ah, but I worry that what they will look like if we continue down this path. And at what point does my family abandon ship, leave the home we built, and find a place where I do not have to constantly worry about the education my kids will get? How does our town continue to attract new families like mine to move here if we don't offer quality schools, families that will face our overall task base? So I urge the Town Council to look around this room, listen to the pleading voices of parents, students, or residents who are begging to support our schools, our teachers, and our children. Find a path that does not include cutting teacher positions, reducing important classes in math, science, and world language, and increasing class sizes. Send back the budget to the Board of Finance so they can do the right thing and restore the proposed education budget. Thank you.
Hi, Sonya Veneshri, 17, Bridgefield Drive. I'm 10 years old and I look like a little kid, but I have strong and powerful words, so please listen up. When I was seven years old, I wrote a letter to Mr. Maniscalca, our Town Manager, because the library seal was falling apart. Last year in February, I chose to testify in front of the Appropriations Committee on behalf of our schools and on our town. I made it clear that that speech was dedicated to my town, East Hampton, and everybody in it. I explained how in my school, which is center school, we don't have, we don't even have a well-worked boiler and we are either too hot or too cold. I love my school because of the teachers and how much they care. I also mentioned the fact that it would be hard on elderly people to pay more taxes. You can tell that I see the whole picture and not just education alone. I saw a list of teachers we are going to lose if we don't increase this budget. No health teacher in middle and high schools, science, math, and English teacher in high school. The most upsetting cut to me is that you are taking away a standard teacher. This is outrageous. A second language is so important. I take German classes and it pushes me to do better. Isn't that what we want, for our students to be pushed to the next level to succeed? My mom explained to me that you are not really cutting the teachers' just the money, but the school needs to make a choice of where to save that money, and that means that you are forcing them to cut teachers, so this is on you. No one will be moving into this town anymore if we don't care about education, everyone will be moved now. There is no reason to be in East Hampton anymore. No education, no people. Who's made this bad situation better? I don't want this town at all apart. I definitely don't want to move. You have to fit with so many students in your hand and you want to do right by all of us. After listening to me, after listening to my speech, I hope that you will change your mind and increase the school budget. Thank you for your time for listening to me, and we don't grow, it helps and drinks.
Hi, Lois Gray, Orange, Connecticut. Music teacher at Center School. I'm not worried about my job and the seven extraordinary young teachers will lose their jobs with the present budget cut. Our loss is another school system's gain. What I am worried about are the children, the children. Children going into fifth grade next year with 26 or more in each class and a fifth grade teacher is cut. The diversity of individual needs is increased. This in turn compromises the time spent by each teacher on the rest of the class. Is your child, whose hand is up waiting for the teacher while he or she is dealing with more aggressive needs of the few? By keeping the classes smaller, increasing support, everyone is better served. We are teaching children to be innovative, creative, independent thinkers. This plan requires the teacher to spend even more time with each child separately, discuss their ideas, and to guide them. We all want every child to succeed. To accomplish this, we need staffing and we need the support from every board and council. We need to trust and believe in the leadership of our education system in East Hampton. I've been here since 1980. I live 40 miles away. I love this town. We need to return the money to the Board of Finance to kind of budget. Thank you.
My name is Elvie. Elvie's offered 74 five at Woodville. My name is Elvie. My name, uh, I, I am five and I am in kindergarten. I, I don't want to be just a number. This budget is important. My teacher deserves her job because she is the best. Thank you.
My name is Taylor Tribetto. 19, Mathieu Lane, and I want to be an orthopedian surgeon. I deserve good education. Thank you.
Don't ever talk of children. A dog is an animal for children. Helen Nossel, 152 Main Street, good evening. I come here tonight with some good news, actually, with all these good news. And the good news is, no one expects the Town Council members to be experts in the area of children, uh, education. Because we happen to have one on the council, that's good, but this should make your job an easy one. No one expects you to be the experts. The good news is, the Board of Education and the Superintendent specialize in knowing what is best for the students of East Hampton, so all the research and the number crunching and the decision-making is already been done by them. There are, they are the group that knows that overloaded classes and mineral electives are bad. They know that students should not delay studying oral language until they're ready to study. They know that there should not be a three-year gap in instruction through information literacy in the middle school. They know that decisions like this made this year have a disastrous effect on the next measak of evaluation. They know that new buildings don't teach students and programs don't teach students and computers don't teach students. Teachers teach students. The good news is, no one expects members of the Board of Finance to be experts in the area of education either. Even though the Board of Finance had agreed to send through budgets from the Town Manager and from the Board of Education without reduction if the bifurcated budget was approved, they failed to do that this year, even though last year's budget was resoundingly approved. So the school budget they present to the Town Council is actually in violation of that agreement. So your decision is easy. Please tell the Board of Finance that you are only prepared to consider the school budget as it was originally drafted. That would be the best news of all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Enes Venishner, 17, Rocher Drive. I'm here to speak in support of sending the proposed education budget of 1.5% back to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance decided last Thursday to reduce the proposed educational budget by the Board of Education from 3.73% to 1.5%. I don't really think it's a reduction, but it is a summation. The 3.73% that the Board of Education put forward is ethically responsible, very modest, and respectful to the hard times we as towns are facing. We can't deny that the cuts that are coming down from Hartford are not putting hardship on us, but this town has a responsibility to provide our children with a solid education, a solid education that generations before them received. The cut of 2.2% translates into roughly $670,000, that's eight teachers. You are looking at class sizes of 25 to 28 students in elementary school level. Unbelievable. Extremely high class sizes and cut of electives in high school that are affecting our children's college choices. Unacceptable. No second language in sixth grade, outrageous. Most districts around us expose students to a second language as early as kindergarten and if not then in third grade, we are already light years from here. Since, okay, I'm sorry. Right there. A second language starting in sixth grade has been a norm in East Hampton since, I did my research on that, 1974. Somebody in the school helped me to figure this out, okay? This is 44 years. This town has not seen a second language in sixth grade. So we are really getting behind and we're really stepping up talking. I would not call a second language a luxury, but a necessity. These are not ones, they are needs. If I walk into the high school, I see no Dutch mall. I see an updated, functioning, practical, modest high school that parents have worked very hard. All parents, it's time to fight in, but just for our basic funding for our schools. You need to move education forward, not now, and not 40 years back. I ask you to listen to our taxpayer base and not just to your party voters. This town taxpayers voted last year in a bifurcated budget in favor. Yeah, three minutes. Thank you.
Alex Hurley, 41, Bridgefield Drive. I am currently a senior here at the high school and I am very happy to say I'll be attending Memphis Southern Eastern University in Fort Lauderdale in the fall, but I couldn't have gotten there all by myself. It was all thanks to the teachers here at the high school, the middle school, all throughout all the schools. It really helped, they really helped me, they pushed me to be my best, and I look around the room and I see all of these teachers who have really helped me and I just couldn't have gotten to where I'm going without them. And I just want the next classes coming up, so like, not even just the classes in the high school, like the class of, you know, 2030. I want them to have the experience that I did here. I will never forget my high school years here and I just want all the kids following to have that same experience. Thank you.
My name is Shipta, 13, Mark Twain's Road. I came here today because I personally have, these teachers have a huge impact on my life and are around me, East Hampton. I have little children in my neighborhood who I hope someday would also want to learn French. They want to put on their college resume, "Hey, I speak fluent French," or "Look in my good brains," because these teachers impacted us so much. We're not having them for our children in the future and many people just moved in here would love to have, know, our new generation to learn new things. And many teachers here, parents, all they want is good things for their children. And education is something that impacts you from when you're young to when you get mature and it carries on for all your entire life. So I hope you'll consider keeping these wonderful teachers because I, I know that I can't, I can't rely on them and that some people, especially these teachers, go out of their way besides their subject. They would help you with, even if you ask politely, with your college resume. They're very nice people and it's, it's wonderful to know that they will, oh, they would go out of their way more than just a computer, more than just a bulletin. These are people who are here for you to help and do the teaching, so thank you.
Derek Johnson, 32, Lakeview Road. I'm here to request that the Town Council return the Board of Finance education budget back to the Board of Finance and have the State Board of Education's original budget. The Board of Finance budget is short-sighted and inspeccious. The, the budget calls for a real decrease in expenditures of $150,000. When you adjust the rate of inflation to the actual expenditures, it results in a 0.5% reduction in real expenditures. Additionally, additionally, good schools pay for themselves. If there's empirical evidence, it is unequivocal. Good schools, in terms of student test scores, school rankings increase residential home values. The evidence is unequivocal. I presented there are two findings from two reputable studies. I didn't give you the call, Matt, it promised a thankful.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only issue is the magnitude of the increase in residential home values as a result of quality schools. Just do the math. 95% of the town's grandness is residential. You alter property values by 2%, 1%, even 0.1%, the budget cuts proposed by the Board of Finance reduces the wealth of this town. That cut, you may think is beneficial, is actually wealth destroying in terms of our town. The evidence is unequivocal. Finally, we all understand the predicament that the town is and the state is. The question is, who's going to bear that? And I would argue that it's not our school children. They have no, they have no part of the overall economic situation in this town or in the state, none at all. And what we do know is this, Melissa, this is what we know. Dematerial teacher quality and class size affects educational outcome. And the number one predictor of income over time is educational attainment. That is the number one predictor. And so when you put into the, into place these cuts, you're jeopardizing outcomes. And as I say in here, let's assume that you say to yourself that we're 95% confident that we're not going to affect outcomes, that means that your 5%, okay, is 100 students, and that's an unacceptable risk. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Steve Archibald, I've been a teacher at East Hampton since 1996, second amendment, and I've been privileged for the past few years to be president of the East Hampton Education Association. I just want to make two quick points. One, the budget that Superintendent Smith put together was a bare-bones budget of 3.7. We asked him to pad it and he doesn't play that. We asked him to pad it and he doesn't play that game, he's sitting up. It's a real budget. Point one. Point two, I see about 20 of my colleagues in this room. They're not young teachers, they're veteran teachers. Their jobs aren't here. They're here tonight because they care about the kids in this town. I'll go even further and say we love the kids in this town. Just ask me, maybe show a little love back.
Good evening. Bob Heine, 19th Bridgefield Road. For the last eight years, I've had the privilege of working in the school system as a substitute teacher, mainly here in the high school, but it down to the middle school. And so I've had a chance to see right in front of me how many of our tax dollars are spent and they seem to have been spent fairly well. We have a very good cadre of teachers. The students overall did very well. We just had the accreditation process and that went extremely well. We are not wasting your money here in the school system. The other thing is, I just want to say that the money we spend on education is not overall, in the long run, a cost or an expense, it's an investment. It's an investment in our kids, which we all know eventually they are the future for this country, this town, this state. We're going to rely on them to become the leaders of this country and they need all the support at this stage that they can get. Because of Board of Finance is taking this opportunity, as they saw, to cut the education budget to where it is actually below, it's below fiscally what we have all out here in terms of what we will accomplish. I ask the Board to return this to the Board of Finance with a strong message about restoring at least some of the funding, if not all of it. Right now, this budget will result in some cuts that none of us in the long run or short run will like, well, when we survive, we will survive. That would not be pretty. And we don't need to do that just to try to get to cut off our noses despite our face. Thank you.
Ben Shealy, 8 Portage Trail. You know, it's funny, I remember back to when I took my first tour, this building nearing completion. And we were in the science lab to group the bus and we thought, wow, this is really impressive. High-tech library, very functional, very comfortable for our students and we were thrilled. And here we are in this beautiful room today. And yet I stand here and wonder, what was it all for? What good is it if we don't have the vital human resources, many of whom are among us tonight, to use the building? We were told as taxpayers that bifurcation would allow us to see what funds were specifically attributable to education. Transparency. So let us see it in its original form, as proposed by our Board of Education and our superintendent in their wisdom. It's conservative, it's appropriate and necessary. Let the voters decide. Thank you.
That it? One more? Okay, could we get up closer to this mic? You guys may need to get on with the matter of listening to the Board of Finance as well.
Hi, Narcissa Maddie, 16 Tammy Anne. I feel like this is all political. These continual attacks on the Board of Education funding has turned rich versus poor, rich versus poor, townies versus newbies, Democrats versus Republicans, and dividing this town instead of uniting it. I don't understand if there are other options that other people have listed to help the less affluent with tax breaks or using other funds, why aren't they being considered? If you are unsure what the community wants, why are you not putting this to a vote and let the community say what they want? This won't remain a small town, it will become a ghost town. This is the future of my children, it is the future of this town, and it is the future for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, that's it then. Thank you very much. And we will close the public remarks portion of the meeting. Item number six nine has been moved to item number six, so new business, transmittal of the 2018-19 budget from the Board of Finance, discussion of possible action on the budget by Town Council. I would ask the audience to remind you that public remarks are over, so I welcome you to stay, but I need to be able to hear and ask questions of our Board of Finance members, so be respectful of that, please.
As you know, the Board of Finance is charged by the Town Council to review the Board of Education budget and the town budget and propose a balanced budget to the Town Council for its success. We spent many hours doing that and during that time, reviewing every item that you can imagine to both budgets, we've come to greatly respect the employees, the department heads, and the new starters that we have in this town, which is truly remarkable people. The budget that the Board of Finance has come up with this year, we break it down by capital first. Capital, we have...
I just interrupted you one second, Dr. Heine. I'm sure everybody's got a copy of what Jeff prepared for us today. And I do, actually, behind you. It's the synopsis of what we're in touch with. Does everybody have this document? Do you have it more now there? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So starting with the capital budget first, we proposed a budget of $1,056,706. The adjustments from the capital committee are as follows. We reduced the place gate contribution by $10,000, to $10,000, excuse me, thank you. And the contribution for the side market repairs to $20,000. We've eliminated the fire chief's or the police chief's vehicle of $26,181. We feel that the vehicle will last another year and we've achieved some savings that way. You'll notice in this capital budget, a $347,500 is to the board of debt. Now that is an increase of $122,500 from 2018. That's a 54% increase from last year. It's just earmarked towards the board of debt. You won't find that on Facebook.
In the capital.
In the capital budget alone.
And that would account for the safety locks, the chrome books...
And teacher laptops.
Teacher laptops.
And the assist abatement, other school security, the films.
And it's a 54% increase over last year's capital budget request for that portion of that of education.
Correct. Moving to the town budget. We recommend a budget of $15,140,708. The budget is as proposed by the town manager with the following reductions. The library part-time salaries is reduced by $10,000. We wish to face that in over two years. We realize that these employees are dedicated and very good, however, we wish to face it in over a two-year period. The second reduction is to the middle haven library of $5,000. Again, we feel it's a private entity, we should be supporting our own library ahead of the middle haven library. The operating budget would be $10,725,616, which is an increase of only $29,000 over the present budget. Together with the capital budget, the debt service, which is an increase of $380,000 from this year 2018, and is due to the issuance of $7,105,000 of bonds to pay for the high school renovation project and road projects. So together with the capital budget, the debt service, and transfer of $15,381 to reserve fund, the total town budget is $15,130,708. The third part of the budget, I can find, if you're ready for me to continue.
Does anybody have a question at any point they should jump in and ask? Is everybody's good so far?
Fine. What's the total budget? For the town?
That's my number I have.
Well, again, that includes the capital, the debt service, the transfer to reserve fund. So the operating budget, Dean, is $10,725,616.
So the government budget is set towards this $10,000 higher than what it was. But Jeff sent us, Dean, is that what you referred to? Dean, can you, I mean, Jeff, can you speak to that?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that is my error. I corrected it in one spot by another. I apologize for that, Dean. I was a mathlete. Let me think of it next time.
Can you leave the mic for just a second?
Moving on to the board of debt. We propose a budget of $30,499,668. Together, this is an increase of $450,000 possibly, with the capital of increase of $122,500 and insured savings. I should know the health plan, the schools has joined with the town into a healthcare plan that has generated savings of $275,000. We feel that that money is free to be spent elsewhere now. So with that 1.5% increase, the capital increase of 122 and a half, and this $275,000 savings, the actual increase for education spending this year is $847,500. This is a 3.41% increase over last year's budget, education budget. A 3.41% increase. And that doesn't include the debt service that is dedicated just to the school system also. So that is even an incomplete number as it stands there. The fourth item we need to look at is the decrease in revenues. Revenue is projected to decrease by $1,438,685. That's a minus 14.22% decrease in revenue projected for the upcoming year. That's money that's not going to be coming in for us.
Does that include, is there state projections involved in that decrease of revenue?
Yes. Maybe the ECS reductions.
And how much was that? I'm sorry, I don't have to go, I'm just estimating, anybody know?
1.2 million. So it's 1.2 million we're not getting from the state for education, is that correct?
Correct.
We were kind of going to return that now.
So with those budgets and decrease in revenue, the town budget would increase by 1.1%. The education budget would increase 1.5%, but as I pointed out, that's not a true number. We're looking at really about an $850,000 increase. The mill rate would be, the resulting mill rate, 33.02, an increase of 1.7 mills. Let me point out that the state of Connecticut in the year 2015 set a cap on towns that have a mill rate of over 32. At that point, personal property, automobile taxes cannot increase above that. They're frozen at 32. So any income that the town looks at projecting into the future is going to be capped by that at 32. We've reached the magic number that the state of Connecticut has set the ceiling on. We're past that now.
So tell me that number, we have 32.
So we're looking at a 2019 tax increase, according to the charts that we presented today, of 5.43%. Now, we were also asked to look at and consider revenue sources to help offset some of the impacts of these budgets. So we have three recommendations that we urge the Town Council to consider. One is to reinstate the passes to Sears Park. It's tough, it's town park, but it generates $10,000. We would like to have that considered. The second is, we would like to, the Town Council, to consider recommending that high school parking passes be issued for $100 each. Many schools in the area require that. That, again, would grant you, would bring in about $10,000. And the third, if I can continue, the third thing that we would recommend for the Town Council to look into is during this process, especially on Facebook, we've heard many people say, "I'd love to pay more taxes, I think it's worth it, I'd love to pay more taxes." We would like the Town Council to look into setting up a foundation that would make it easier. As it stands now, anybody in the town can write out a check and earmark it to the school if they feel that the taxes aren't high enough. Thank you very much, if you want to do that, we certainly appreciate the help. But we've been told that it would be helpful, easier for the town to do this if a foundation is set up to process these donations. I would like the Town Council to look into that. Again, any help on revenue side?
That accepts donations and goes specifically toward education?
Or the town. If they want to do it for Sears Park, terrific, whatever. I'd like to have it looked into. Again, we're looking at revenue, we're trying to do whatever we can to offset the gap in these budgets. With the state of Connecticut, Hartford, and East Beloit, we have to do something on our own.
And I'd like to just go back to, you know, paying for parking at the high school. I know there was a concern for kids that stayed late, that there would be like a platypot bus. I'm thinking that maybe we could look into that to deal with those kids. The Board of Education was very worried, you know, that some kids would not have rides, their parents can't get there, also they can't ride with other high school kids. So maybe we can look to the bus company and see if we can get platypot bus. You know, maybe we can deal with them or use some of the money to facilitate that. We don't want kids stranded, but we do have to look for revenue sources.
Speaking of revenue sources, has the grandest increase, the town real estate gone up? People coming into this town?
It has by 1% Jeff? Yes, about 1%. About 1%.
And what was it last year? Do we know what was last year?
Half percent.
So we're growing. It's low. You saying?
Yes, we are growing, so we might, as the road comes, so do the expenses now.
I was just going to ask one more thing. Go back to that state reg that can't, the mill rate can't go over the certain bound once it reaches so many mills.
This is again, it's for automotive property insurance. This isn't for your house or anything like that, it's just automotive. They found a great disparity in different towns throughout the state. The same vehicle could be in library tax, in a normal amount of money as opposed to other towns. And they wanted to set a cap on it of 32 mills. And again, with this budget, there's even a 5.43% increase in taxes, it would bring us over... it would bring us over to 33.02.
Chair, if I can interrupt you. At least in terms of the tax cap that's been raised in almost every year, I think for the last couple of years, it started at the 32 or 33 number range. It's now at 30.
Yeah, but we are, it's safe projected for it to go down to 29, actually.
That would be nice.
Okay, 37, fine. But we do have to watch where our mill rate is going. Thank you.
What percentage of the town budget goes to town services? How much goes to education?
67% goes to education.
It's right here in the top chair. Whereas, according to this, we have 7% of our budget goes to debt service, 3% of our budget goes to capital, to sentiment, 23% goes to town services, and 67% goes to education.
So again, that 67% does not reflect the education portion of the capital, which again, we saw as substantial, and the debt service. So it's more just operating budget and not the Chromebooks, the laptops, et cetera.
And that percentage has been pretty steady over the years? Last couple of years, last seven years?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Do you know if the debt service, has the payment for the high school gone up over last year?
It is going up. We have another tranche of debt that we're going to be issuing. So that's a, that's the primary driver for the increase in debt budget. A 6.7 million on debt was for the high school. We issued it in two tranches, one in '16, '17, about $20 million. And then the second tranche will be FY '18, '19, it's about 6.7.
Is that the last of it?
Probably, kind of state audit. So if the state audit is bad, it has to change. But I would expect it to be maybe $1 million to $2 million hell of an issue. Anything else?
Some comments were made about using the fund balance portion perhaps. What do you think of that?
I think it's a horrible idea. And I'll refer to our town manager to extrapolating on that, or he was.
I won't try you off.
Thanks.
So now, Mr. Jeff and I have had this conversation a number of times in terms of using fund balance. I won't recommend it, Mr. Jeff, I know doesn't recommend it. The reason we've used the fund balance, I know a number of people have pointed to that in the past, it's really been trading cash assets for hard assets, whether that be property or vehicle equipment that we needed, using it for operating funds is really not a good management practice from a financial perspective. We have used it in the past for emergency expenditure, where we found ourselves when we were down too many police officers to actually fill shifts and to bring on somebody in a mid-year scenario. We did do that in a scenario, but that was a very small dollar amount. And it was a one-time use.
I'm going to ask the audience to please refrain from speaking. No one interrupted when you spoke. I expect the same courtesy as we try to conduct this meeting. Thank you.
So I think when we look at the idea that the town of East Hampton currently has a AAA credit rating, we would like to probably continue to maintain that moving forward, especially with issuing debt for the high school, issuing debt for the town hall police department, and some of the other larger projects that we have turning on online. In order to maintain that AAA credit rating, we received our AAA credit rating for really two reasons. One was our financial health, which we are very insur- definitely we've done a good job of maintaining that. The other reason is because of our strong management practices in the way that we've been able to manage our way through some of the financial challenges we face currently. The other challenge with using the fund balance is that it only is a temporary solvent. It don't us a Band-Aid on a problem today and does not solve an issue for tomorrow. I actually had a thought about this today, that we have a financial problem that actually occurred in this current fiscal year. And we found a Band-Aid for it in this current fiscal year, not using the general fund, but using revenue generated from our tax sale. So we've already put that Band-Aid on this year. And this is an issue that's now stemming into the next year. It needs to be resolved next year in terms of the reduction of revenue. So, like I said, we would not recommend using the general fund at this time.
So you said that this was a Band-Aid, the tax sale?
It could be looked at that way.
Because you're not going to be able to do that year after year. That's the point, you're going to run out of taxes.
It's a one-time revenue source, no different than a general fund.
Madam Chair, please.
Mr. Maniscalco did bring up the tax sale. Is it correct, Mr. Maniscalco, that there are funds that we'll receive after July 1th for that tax sale because of the sale of the property back in late February, early March? We've only received how much so far in that tax sale?
No, I believe we've received all, I believe we've received everything. Yeah, we've received all 1.25 million that has come up.
Oh, you did? Was that required even though the legitimate taxpayers have until a certain day?
Yeah, so essentially what happens is when, when somebody goes to buy the property or bids on a property, they're the winning bidder. They put $5,000 down. They had to pay in full by that Monday to the attorney. The attorney turned the money over to the town and paid for the property at the amount that was due. Then, in the event that somebody actually shows up and pays for all the back taxes and everything, that transaction is handled between the attorney and the winning bidder.
Now, what are we going to be doing with those extra dollars that we're receiving since we did not need all of those funds to take care of the challenge that we had this year?
So a good part of them are covering the loss of revenue from the state for ECS, as we know. I believe the other part probably ended up in the general fund unless I think there's other...
Yeah, we really have to see how our year-end fund value, but anything excess we could drop to the general.
To the one?
To the general, to the fund balance.
So that money that we're expected to receive doesn't show on this budget, correct?
No. It wouldn't show up here. Not in the 2019 budget.
We're not showing that as revenue in this budget, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct. And how much did we receive through that tax sale? I know how much we received prior to the sale.
It was approximately 1.5 million total.
I understand that. How much did we receive before we went to the tax sale?
That included, that's included...
About 1.5 million, actually. Involvement.
So there's a little over $400,000. That's over and above and beyond what we were expected to receive, correct? So we haven't designated what that fund is going to?
No.
And from what I just heard, it's just going to go into the fund balance?
Not before 50. What Mike was trying to articulate is when we sent the notices of the tax sale before the sale, before we actually go to sale, we received people paid off about 1.1 million.
Oh, I understand that.
Or 1.5 million. At sale, we raised 4.5. So in total, we generated 1.5 million dollars.
Well, I understand that. How much of that money did we need this year in order to bail out, thank you, the state legislature, the state senate?
A little over 1.2 million.
So doesn't that leave some money? About 300,000?
Well, if you strictly look at revenues, yes. When you have looked at the spending side too.
Are you indicating that the spending side is going to be over budget?
No, hopefully not, not on our side, no.
Do we know the Board of Ed's side?
I don't, no.
And why is it that the Board of Ed doesn't supply us, the Board of Finance, with that information on a monthly basis? They used to, after January 1st, they would feed a report acknowledging their funding level and what was available at the end of the year.
I can't answer that question.
Why doesn't the Board of Finance require that? Because how can one plan for the rest of the year without knowing that in advance? Is it a surprise at the end of June when, oh my gosh, we're shy 50, 60, 70,000 dollars? One would think we would be preparing for that surprise now.
The Board of Finance has requested a year-to-date budget, and we have not received that at this time.
Well, duly noted here, it would warm the cockles of my heart if we didn't. I have a second item. Almost 25 years ago, and I remember it well because I was the assistant to the superintendent of the schools, and the Board of Ed had a challenging year. We had many, many more special education students than we had ever imagined. And we actually ended the year without money to pay for all of the bills. We had to go before the Board of Finance and request additional appropriation so that we could pay and make good on the services that we required. The following year, the Board of Ed had a tad bit better year. I don't recall the exact amount, but it comes back to me that between 70 and 8,000 dollars was put into a special account so that the Board of Ed would not have to go into a challenging situation if by chance a new student came into the district. Mr. Juckel was very nice to share with me today that there is right now $237,000 in that account, specifically set to allow to make up for any special ed costs that the Board of Ed cannot pay off based on their budget. My suggestion is that some of those funds be used similar to the excess cost funds that we've seen for special ed. I'm sure the Board of Finance is well aware that when the Board of Ed provided their budget, they put in a figure for special ed. But unless things have changed, I'd be surprised if they have. The Board of Ed had to take into account the grants that they expected to receive from the state of Connecticut through special education grants. And typically, whatever was received was subtracted from the special ed budget. So at the end of the year, between the funds coming in and the funds expended by the Board of Ed in their budget would equate to the budget figure that was presented to the Board of Finance when that budget was presented early in March. I would like to suggest that, and I don't know who can do this, but I'd like to suggest that that $237,000 sitting there and has been collecting interest for over 25 years should be considered to assist the Board of Ed, who interestingly enough is proposing next year to be a very challenging year in special education. I'm suggesting that maybe not all of it, but a portion of it be set aside to take care of that challenge if in fact it occurs. If it doesn't, the money isn't touched. But if it does, the money is there to be used. But I'm going to add one other thing. I would like to see that money, if in fact, whomever the board is that's allowed to do it allocates whatever, that that be deducted from the Board of Ed budget as one of their cuts. The services will remain the same. There's a budget, there's money in an account. Together, they combine and provide the funding that the Board of Ed has requested. It's a simple, a simple process. It allows the Board of Ed to make a cut, which the Board of Finance desires of having. But it also allows the Board of Ed to continue offering the programs, the services, and the staff that they feel they need. It's not going to solve all their problems. It certainly would help with some of them.
Any other questions for Dr. Brown, or for just all right here, while they're here? I'm not sure I understood what you said, Kevin, but it sounds really good.
Madam Chair, what is the process now?
The process, if you're asking me the process of how you spend at Board of Education...
No, 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 Madam, no, I'm asking, what is our next step? We've heard the president table.
We will continue to discuss, and then I'm hoping somebody makes a motion to send this along to voters, like the people with... But I think there's other people at this table that might like to speak besides you and Josh. So I'm going to go next to Dean or Pete, whoever would like to start. Poor Dean is on an island by himself over there. But he really is a member, and a very valuable one of them.
I'm not going to repeat everything. Everybody knows it's a challenging year. I look out, I see, I hear what you've said in support of education. I'm also sitting here thinking about the people who are not in this room that are taxpayers. Do we balance the budget on the back of our kids? Do we balance the budget on the backs of seniors? Do we balance the budget on the people who have had a fixed income since the day they stopped working? Some of us, I mean, some of us, maybe not me, but some of us, yeah, can afford a $300 increase. There are people out there who can't afford a $100 increase. They make choices around this. People in this room make choices around this budget. I have a young family. I want that kid to go to Lululemon, football, wherever. Money, money, money. $100 here, $400 for football. Go on and on. Park and Rec, $200, summer camp, $400. Who can afford that? Wages are not going up as fast as we'd like them to go. Where does the money come from? We sat here last year and gave the Board of Ed what they wanted. Low and behold, we increased programs. We got a volleyball program, we got a volleyball coach. Increase. I don't know where it stops. I'm for education. It's more than education, people. It's more than education. I don't want to make those hard choices sitting there for a senior. Do I pay my taxes? Do I get the medicine? That's the other side of this equation. And I'm not trying to put you down for coming here and rallying for your position, for your cause, for your kids. These people had to balance a budget with everybody in mind. Everybody that has to pay. You may not like it, I may not like it. We all voted for them and for the people sitting here to make these decisions.
Thank you. Dean, are you ready for one?
No, I'm not giving up.
Thank you. I think as I look at this budget, something, I'm reminded of something, a book that was written by Malcolm Gladwell several years ago, maybe a dozen years ago, called The Tipping Point. It's a very, very interesting book because it defines where something happens, where it becomes irreversible to change, probably a bad pattern, things going south. I'm concerned that our budget may be reaching the tipping point, particularly in education. And I'm concerned that we may not be addressing the things that need to take us into the future. Many of you know I write often, not as much as I like to lately, but about East Hampton's past. Just because I write about the past doesn't mean I want to relive the past or be in the past. in the past. So I'm very concerned with where the budget is going. I also think as a town, we do not incur a lot of expenses in public service. Our main public service are roads and education. We have a library and we're nickel-diming, taking some money from that. We have a playscape and we're nickel-diming, taking some money from that. And I certainly see the little kids that love to play up at Seastar Field. You know, along the way, we're maybe gonna do something to clean up the lake, which is a huge asset to the town. But it comes back to education, and it was brought up by at least one speaker, and from my knowledge, be working in real estate and in finance. Education is one of the most important driving forces and factors to improve the grand list and viability of the town. Now, I think everything is really interconnected in what we're doing. We're, the council in January worked on a village district proposal to try to generate a district that would generate new taxes for the town, increase our grand list, our tax base. We've been very, very deficient, if that's the proper word, over the years in matching our growth, particularly in the business sector, with growth of our budget, and we need to turn that around. It all goes hand in hand. It isn't an isolated thing, just education, just library, just roads. It all works together to make this a better community. I think there's been some points brought up this evening. Mr. Wright touched on one thing, the excess funds from the tax sale might be another, where the Board of Finance could conceivably evaluate and take another look at what the budget is, because I'm really fearful that we get to a point that beyond repair. I thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the Board of Finance for the work, and I don't think everyone's keeping in consideration what they're still asking the taxpayers to come up with. We're asking the taxpayers of this town at this time to come up with a 1.7 mil increase. We had 1.4 something last year, another 1 point the year before. What makes you think this is going to pass? You might be looking at this budget going down at 1.7 and coming back at a zero increase because the taxpayers had their enough of their mil rate going up. I think they did their due diligence, the money that Kevin's talking about and that Mike mentioned, we might need if this goes down to support these programs. You can't keep going with 1.7 increase, mil increases. It doesn't work. You'll end up like Hartford. Everyone's leaving, their mil rate is 47. With a higher mil rate, is there anyone in this room that wanna tell me their school systems are better than the town East Hamptons? No, they're not. We can't keep going up. We need a Board of Finance that's doing their job and keeping things in check. Thank you.
Sure, the noisiest microphones I've ever heard. I just think that put things, to keep things in perspective, you guys do a tremendous job marketing, and I applaud you. I love the right to protest, and you did a good job with that, too. But I agree with Pete that this is a $31 million budget, which educates about 1,800 kids and 200-plus teachers and administrators, all of whom do a wonderful job. No doubt about that, no one disagrees with that. But our jobs that we were elected to do include $15 million to take care of 13,000 people, double-inclusive of the students. We're health, we're safety, we're fire, we're police, we're infrastructure, we're the lake, we're the libraries, we're the fire department. We are Newtown Hall. We are paying for the building we're sitting in. All that money comes out of that measly by comparison to education, $15 million. So I can appreciate all of your concerns. I'm sad that Mrs. Nozel flunked the Board of Finance twice, because I think you guys did a fabulous job, and I do have to give a B to some of the people that followed her comment about bifurcation, because bifurcation was never lauded as, nor is it defined as, a straight line to referendum. Bifurcation simply means that our voters get to vote twice on the same budget. They get to vote for the education portion and the general government portion. Unless in our charter you wanted to remove a Board of Finance, then you could have a nearly straight line. It would still go to council. If you wanted anarchy, you could eliminate council and finance. And probably some of you here, under pressure, not clapping, would like to have that happen. But guess what? You don't survive well that way. And so we have now the right and the privilege to vote for education and for general government, and now it becomes very clear to the Board of Finance, who uses that as a tool to determine what you all like or don't like. And then they re-recommend to us. This Board of Finance, and I've been doing this on and off for way longer than I would like to, is probably the most diligent Board of Finance I've ever worked with. Many times, we deserve it. I think Chris Goff would have to agree with you, like the outcome or not, they did their homework. And before that, Boards of Finance turned that right over to the town council, and it's not our job to marmarize those budgets. You guys did.
Sorry, I can't agree.
Okay, well, I'm sorry you don't. I disagree that the Board of Education did theirs. That's my point. I have to tell you that Paul Smith does a fabulous job. His job is to do what he's doing. His job is to lobby for education, for teachers, and for all the programs he can possibly get us to pay for. We paid for that, that's his job. Board of Education's job is to also keep in mind our tax dollars. It shouldn't always come to the Board of Finance or the town council to look like bad guys. We are not against education. Everybody in this room has had children, I think, everyone here except me and Tim, that went through the school system here, and Tim went through it himself, and so did you, and so did you, and so did you. I have 37 nieces and nephews. I mean, I'm so tired of being called anti-education. It's so not true. I taught here, have a master's degree, spent a lot of time in school. Like I said, 37 nieces and nephews. I've been to the plays, the games, the libraries, the drawings, loved it all. This school does a fabulous job. I'm very proud of East Hampton schools. More money does not necessarily equal better education. And right now, we're looking at a $2 billion deficit for 18, 19, and a $3 billion one just came out of OPM six days ago for 19, 20. Where are we gonna get that money? The trajectory that we're on puts us out of our league for paying those taxes. And if we can't meet our contractual obligations with $31 million, and I suggest you look at contracts. I think that's also, the only other thing I'd like to add to you is that we have an obligation to our taxpayers who can't afford to stay. Pete's right about that. There are more people here than just the people in this room, and we have to be mindful of that, and that is part of our job.
First, I'd like to start off, I did appreciate all the speakers tonight. I did listen to them all, and having children come on, you can talk to them upstairs, it just definitely touches on me a little bit. I've been in school, I've actually went to school in this town, I did go to a little town school, high school, but I spent a lot of time in school. As Madam Chair states, that I don't have any children, but I do donate a ton of time. It is for a technical school, but I'm involved with children at times. I teach a lot with automotive, and it's something I'd like to continue going, because I think kids, children need to deal with with their hands. There's a shortage in a lot of areas in the tradespeople. We need stonely plumbers, electrician, auto mechanics, and whatever there may be like that. Not everybody can be a computer programmer. So I do spend a lot of time on that, even though I don't have children. And again, I did spend a lot of time in East Hampton schools. So I'd like to also applaud the Board of Finance, because they did dig into this, I feel like they dug into the bones of this, and they did a great job on it. There's a lot of talk about people moving out due to the school budget cuts. And I have to agree with Councilman Brown on this, that there's other people in this town also besides moms and dads. You know, there's a lot of people that have fixed incomes, they're just trying to make ends, and they have a lot of retirements. We have a lot of people who've lived in this town for their entire life, and they would obviously like to finish that. So we also have to think about those, too. I understand nobody wants to do any cuts. I wish there was an answer so we could make everybody happy. I really do. I spent a lot of time in the last three weeks discussing this at our local little Dunkin' Donuts and whatever, with a lot of people just walking in the door, to moms, to dads, to older people, to whatever it may be. And there's a lot of different people across the board that we probably noticed in this year tonight. Again, I wish there was something we can do to make this easier fix. This is a hard decision all the way around. As Madam Chair also spoke, there's other things in this town that are extremely important to people in this town, as in the lake. That's one of my sides to why I enjoy the lake, and if you haven't been out of the lake, I urge you to do that. Going back even to the playscape, I would also like to talk about saying there's a lot of talented people in this town. A lot of towns have volunteered to help to love this, not even as in dollar amounts as in time. So maybe we could look into that, because I agree, we definitely need something like that in this town. I agree with you always applying on them. So I think there's other ways around something like that. So I guess, again, I was trying to go back, and Mr. Brown sold all my thunder, but I have to agree a lot with Mr. Brown's saying on this. We have to look out for everybody.
Just a couple things. We wouldn't be in this situation where everybody's scrambling for funds if the state of Connecticut wouldn't properly fund it. Like I said before, for $1.2 million in the hole because the state is not funding us with the education cost share, we have to make up for that some. Where does that come from? Even with that, we have an increase in education this year, about $450,000, I believe, and if you go through capital, it's $122,000, and so we're $800,000 altogether. The way the Board of Education budget works, they get a pile of money, and they figure out why they gotta spend it. They do their contracts, and then that's everything else where they wanna put it. They decide, Board of Ed decides where they wanna allocate that money. And they have extra money this year. It's not an increase in spending, it's shortening around the rate of increase. So it's a misnomer to say that we're cutting by education, we're increasing the amount, it's increasing actually. So the people are really concerned about education. I was on Board of Ed, I am, too. I got a kid in the school system. It's all very important to us. So we've gotta think about the other folks in town, and especially the seniors and other folks who do not have access to a lot of money to pay all the taxes that have been raised in the last several years. It's unsustainable to not have rate increases we've had in the last five years. Can't continue like that. Last year, some year before, more things been settled on the towns, because the state will not fund certain things, and that's sharing. And where do we do it? What do we do as a town, as a community? We have to make decisions, and hard decisions. So it's very difficult, but it has to be done. Board of Finance has done a great job with this, believe me. It's 1.4 mil increase, that's huge. That's like years ago, six, seven years ago, would never, ever have been possible passing. But we'll see what happens. It's been real disappointment from the state's point of view, not helping the towns out. If the state stepped up and did its obligations, we would not be in this situation. So we're not gonna saddle it on raising taxes on everybody, or seniors and everybody else that really can't afford it. So we have to think of those people, too.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2019 Capital Improvement Plan with the following modifications. A, a decrease, decrease the airline trail grant match by $25,000. B, increase the place, replacement project by $25,000.
Second on that motion?
Second.
Discussion on that motion? Do you have any understanding?
Motion was to approve the 2018, 2019 Capital Improvement Plan with two modifications. Decreasing the airline grant by $25,000 and then increasing the rate of state grants. In other words, you're taking money out of the airline trail and putting it in the place gate.
Madam Chair, could we ask someone to share with us how long does that...
Mike, we're gonna ask Mike.
So one of the things that the town can do is I can direct Public Works to do approximately $25,000 worth of in-kind work on the airline trail grant. That was something we were trying to possibly avoid, but I think between the reductions in sidewalks and some other areas, we should be able to get Public Works staff to be able to make up that in-kind cost of about $25,000. And then the increase in the playground funds should be able to keep that project on schedule. So basically, we're taking money from one spot, putting money in a different spot, it ends up in that zero, and we get both projects.
Madam Chair, do we have to go with the state to get that approved?
No.
No, not at all.
Did the state provide us with the money for the airline grant?
Yes, so they provided us with funds for the airline trail grant. They have an in-kind requirement. The in-kind requirement can be in cash or in services. So it's not just required. We've provided Public Works services in the past for the other two phases. We've provided equipment services, actual equipment, that has acted as in-kind, so we very easily can do that. And the state is very flexible as to which way we can give it. We don't have to have a great legal approach.
Madam Chair, the question I have is, why did this go to drop out of the heavens tonight?
Oh, we have a bar in the heavens, if you'd like to ask questions about it. I think that was certainly has been a long that we wanted to...
We never heard this discussed with the Board of Finance. This wasn't discussed, was this discussed with the Capitol?
This wasn't a Board of Finance discussion. This was a discussion between Mike Maniscalca, who made a suggestion to Mr. Philhauer, who made a suggestion to me, I thought it was a great idea. You don't have to vote for it, Kevin.
I'm not, I'm just saying, why are we hearing about it on the 11th hour? That's what I'm asking. Why has this not come up? And trust me, the Board of Finance has done a wonderful job of meeting. Lord knows they've had plenty of meetings, but this didn't come up at all. All of a sudden now, it's sprinkling like, wow! Why did this come up earlier?
I don't bet anybody thought of it earlier, Kevin. That'd be my answer for you. Or did Bridges?
It came up because people are sitting around and thinking of solutions rather than complaining. They're looking for solutions, and the timing, you may think is bad, but we wanna discourage that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was at the Board of Finance meeting last Thursday night. There were about 40 of us there. The agenda did not allow anyone to speak at that meeting.
That was the meeting with the Board of Education?
No. That was when they finally adopted their budget. Okay? Unfortunately, this could very well have been a conversation that evening, as well as many other things. But that evening, just like tonight, that budget magically just appeared. Board of Ed members couldn't speak at that meeting. Anyone sitting in the audience couldn't speak at that meeting. Here we have a budget that was discussed, and the chair acknowledged it was discussed in a caucus. It was actually discussed in a caucus, and I would not know that.
Kevin, it wasn't discussed in a caucus. It was a, sometimes Mike and I just have one on one.
No, 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 you didn't allow me, Madam Chair, to finish. Okay? It was acknowledged at the public hearing, the Finance Board's public hearing with the town, that my Republican friends did meet in a caucus. They met over the weekend prior to the hearing. They already had worked on a budget, excuse me.
So did you.
They already had worked on the budget. We had our hearing. There was no discussion. No one was allowed in the public to ask a question. No one was allowed in the public to ask a question, to share their thoughts on the budget that we're looking at tonight. It was just brought down, and it was voted on Thursday evening. That's the concern that I have. And that also tags along with this idea, which I have no problem with, and I think is fantastic. That's why I'm asking budgets, because I'm not aware of it. But that should all be a part of being transparent. That's the concern that I have.
I'm sorry, there's no audience participation. I'd really like it if you held your applause as well. I will say, Kevin, that you cannot grandstand on coopting when both are... A, it's perfectly legal. Your party's done it probably more often than the Republicans because you've been in power more often. So I think that's a weak argument. The fact that somebody suggested that this might be a nice transfer of money to get both projects does, I think, is a nice solution. If you don't like it, you have the right to vote no. But right now, we have a motion and a second on the table. Are there any further comments about that particular motion before we take a vote? All those in favor, please say goodbye by saying aye. Opposed? All right.
Okay, second motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the town government budget as recommended by the Board of Finance in the amount of $15,147,800.
Second? Discussion?
Discussion on the general government amount of budget as proposed by the Board of Finance. Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Some move?
Third motion. Motion to approve the Board of Education budget as recommended by the Board of Finance in the amount of $30,499,668.
Second? Discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd prefer to go back to the Board of Finance so that they can review the budget and better understand the ramifications that that budget is going to have on the education, the educational system in the district. There is time for them to do that. So I really can't support this. I would prefer that they reconsider looking at the Board of Ed budget, working with the Board of Education to see if there are ways to creatively come up with financing solutions to some of the Board of Ed challenges. I understand that it isn't easy to meet all the demands that everyone has and also live within a community where we have to meet the challenges of all of our citizens. But this is too important to not ask that the Board of Finance spend another hour or two and partner with the Board of Ed and with anyone interested in the town so that we can work out something that will not be detrimental to the school district.
Any other comments?
That's emotional, so...
It's not emotional, it was a comment. We already have emotion and a second on the floor.
No, you're not. I made a motion.
Emotion's been made and seconded were a discussion. So is there any other discussion? Do you have any thinking for the day? Do you have a comment you'd like to make during the discussion phase of this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The nays are? Then the ayes have it. Right now, I'd like to move on to the number of per...
Oh, no, it's not a second.
Right now, we're on visiting contracts, and evidently we have.
Okay, so as we went through our dispatch merger, we were expecting that Glassbury was going to go to a different CADRM system. That's the electronic system that allows them to do dispatching. So we did have that, those funds put aside in capital. So they've recently made a decision to go to NextGen. That's a statewide service that's used in multiple communities. It should be more cost-effective for us longer term, as since they're used in multiple communities, when the state comes out with a new regulation or requirement of CADRM, those changes should be done in a more cost-effective manner in the software and shared across the entire state. So we are looking for a motion to approve that in the amount of $117,000 off of the state contract number that I listed for you in our...
So...
Questions, comments, concerns?
Questions? Mike, how much does Glassbury contribute in relation to what we're asking?
They're paying a whole lot more than us, yeah. So they have their own separate software package that we're buying. Ours is actually kind of like a plug-and-play insert for just these things.
Second question, what's the difference between page one and page two? Is page two of the financial proposal a financing package?
Yeah, so there is a way to finance it long-term or over a few years. A lot of these companies will work with you on that. The challenge that I think we would be faced with if we were to go down that road is that these softwares are changing so rapidly. You know, I can see your financing '47, and all of a sudden, it's going to be '55 because they have to have some kind of additional sort of upgrade. And it just, it kind of gets a little twisted when you're doing a piece of software.
Any other questions? Mary Mall, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Vote. We have no resolutions or dispositions or proclamations or statements. Continue. This will be the approval of the RFP on one month's due. This is a second reading. Therefore, we can go on this evening if the council is so inclined. And Michael, you go ahead.
Yeah, so I made a couple of changes. One, the mandatory walkthrough, like I had discussed with the council last time. And then the other thing I did was add in a tentative schedule.
I'd like the motion to approve it.
Second.
Any questions or concerns for Mike?
Just two questions. One, is all we ask for six copies. I think there's at least seven members to this council, county manager, and several others. Should we have sufficient copies prepared?
All parties are required to submit a clearly marked original. It's six copies of this proposal. Is that a normal amount or...
Usually we take six, but we could definitely do more. We usually take one and just photocopied for myself and you guys, or myself in one person. But we could definitely change it tonight.
Is that standard or like do the applications at all have number six?
I think so.
I'd leave it at six.
He can make copies, say...
We can photocopier.
Dean gets an original. I can take a copy.
Set up a question on page three. I think it's... A list of plant references, cities and towns. Somebody that's making a proposal here, they've done a private deal with private hardware. We're going to exclude them for consideration.
You know, and I think one of the things we see oftentimes when we put out an RFP is we'll get questions back from people. And that may be a question that we get from developers. When we do get those types of questions, we post them out publicly on the DAS and on account websites that everybody sees it. I mean, from my perspective, ideally, it would be great to have somebody who's worked for the city and town doing tour town, doing something similar. That's it. If not, and it's not available, then I think we could accept private entities as well.
I'm just thinking private mills or things that they've been privately developed and haven't sued anybody.
I agree with Dean, but I don't think we're going to get this massive number of... Coming back. If you get somebody coming back who's got old words of something he did last week, building a shed, and has enough cash, he might be all in the apple. So I mean...
Just still have a poll, poll right now?
So I guess we'll just take it as a company, see what we get. But yeah, I'd like to get it out there and get the process started.
I have heard some interest in it. I know Dean's argument at our last meeting, I'm pretty much off post, but I've heard enough interest in it that I thought it would be a good idea for us to strike kind of a little ironclad.
My comment is just like, I didn't want to eliminate somebody that might be considering a...
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nay? Great, enough progress going. All right, and now we're down to audio 10, 10 minutes of reports.
Okay, so real quickly, under state revenue projection, the federal deficit for outer years is pretty well. I had the chance today to sit on panel discussing public-private partnerships and have to be seated here to the commissioner for GOP. Had a conversation with him about the current state affairs associated with the budget. His comment to me was that if he didn't feel there was enough stomach available within the state legislature to change a lot. And I also read a couple of articles recently in some newspapers talking about how there is the talk of not even doing anything to the current budget and letting it run forward as deficit. Because if the legislature does make some changes, it could potentially be even further detrimental. So we will keep tabs on where that goes. I don't really know at this point, but we'll keep watching. In terms of the police research, I'm very pleased. I blessed you all. I'm all on the table before the meeting started. I'm very pleased to announce that we will be hired, that we've already hired Dennis Lochner as our chief of police. He is currently a captain in Glassbury. He will be starting on April 23rd. And my hope is that we can have a nice ceremony where we swear him in and put badges on him at your April 24th meeting. I will say that we ran him through quite the gamut of background examinations, psychological evaluations, polygraphs, everything the state required in the past, all of them applying to others.
Here's the most important question. How's Ringer feel about him?
Ringer did not bite him. I wanted to make you aware that we are going to be participating in an emergency management drill with the state of Connecticut on June 16th. That's a Saturday. We'll be having staff as well as our volunteer fire department and ambulance participating in that. Word that I've received so far is it's supposed to be some type of a major tropical storm slash flooding incident. So we do this pretty annually and participate in them. It's a pretty good drill for us to kind of see what our capacity is as a municipality. Two items that I don't have on the agenda. First of all, I've provided all of you with a memo regarding myself. I'm only going on vacation next week. So Jeff is in charge. Be still very good about Jeff, so. I don't know if he's pleased to be in charge or not. And then lastly, Jeremy Carley presented the district to Clinton zoning at their meeting last week. So it's a little behind schedule, we're not on it to be book of whether, how active Clinton zoning has been at that speed.
They have had two meetings or a lot of that?
I don't even think they've set a public hearing yet. So he just provided them the annual documentation at this point. So it's got a little wasted.
It was sent okay by the attorneys that kind of...
Yes. And that is all I have.
Do we have any appointments this evening? We do have a tactic. How would somebody like to know that?
With the motion to return $176.71 to the board.
Back to this? Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And then on communications, you do have your March Board Commission summary attached to your packet. And now I'd like to entertain a motion for...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Karen. Yeah, really.
Thank you for your time and effort that you put in on the budget and discussions tonight. I just wanted to clear up a few things that occurred to me as the meeting went on. There was a comment that from a member of the Board of Finance that the Board of Education did not provide year-to-date budget expenditures to the Board of Finance. There was a request from an individual member of the Board of Finance directly to me, not through the channels or any kind of... There was never a public request for that information. However, I immediately responded to the individual member of the Board of Finance and copied in their chairperson and our superintendent with that information. Neither of those two Board of Finance members were here tonight, so why that was not shared or why further information was not requested during numerous meetings we had, I can't answer. In relation to that same discussion that was occurring, there was information regarding our current year budget and where we stand and why that hadn't been discussed. And I think right in our budget book on page 15, the superintendent brought out exactly what's happening to us, sort of like how the state actually cut the revenue this year. Our increase in special education are actually happening this year as well. And that was publicly disclosed right here in our budget book, that the increases in special education services, tuition for outplacements, and transportation for outplacements account for over a third of the increase for next year's budget. Without those increases, our next year's budget increase would only be 1.85%. And that was never hidden and was always brought out. And if anyone had a question, they should have been followed up at that time. I'd also like to make clear that the Board of Education, in response to all of these sort of concerns that we've had, has made a very aggressive effort to raise funding now. And not like the $100 increments from our students ourselves, but to the tune of almost $1.5 million between further grant requests...